Going to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Let's actually start with the Pledge of Allegiance first.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Smasko.
Present.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Here.
Commissioner Beeden.
Present.
Commissioner Trello.
Present.
Commissioner Rushing.
Here.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Here.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Here.
Items for additions, deletions, changes to the agenda.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to make an addition to the agenda to add a closed session to discuss a written legal opinion.
Support.
We will put that in.
Our.
Do we do that?
Or after.
Or do we do it at the very end? Yeah, so we'll do that after adjournment.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept that?
So moved. Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item five. Approval.
This time I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the closed session as item 17. Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item six, minutes previous meetings A and B.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve and file the minutes of the January 28th, '24 Commission meeting and the February 1st, '24 Standing Committee meetings.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
No proclamations. Item eight, consent agenda is A through.
Time, I would move to approve items A through A to on the consent agenda.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item nine, reports of standing in special committees. I'm going to start with Commissioner Smasko.
I guess the Parks and Rec is one yesterday.
Steve, can you talk into the mic?
Sorry about that. Parks and Rec meeting was yesterday. Basic, the central topic of discussion, biggest item was this park down in North Channel Park. And it's coming along quite well. They updated the master plan for the park to include the property. There was a fellow had a house that encroached into the footprint pretty bad. I won't say it's squalor, but he was doing a wood cutting business and so forth. Anyway, they, he got his, he got good money for the place. We got it taken care of. We had grants for it, all that. And then they revised it. They added because of that, the house can be now a center for the employees and so forth, a resource center. They've got two pavilions and they laid out. The, the design has a lot of features. It has a beach. It has a, a boardwalk over a sway all over a natural area. It also has an area that they're doing for, set up the showmobile. They're probably going to get a third showmobile down the road to use down there. And they're right along the DNR launch, which is next door. They've got electrical lines running all the way out to the water because there was, I guess, a boathouse or something there years ago. They're putting 30 amp poles out there for food trucks. So you won't have all the generators running. You can have a fan stand and people getting food and whatnot. And so it's a, it's, it's a very nice addition for a park. I'm sure that people will love it down there. That was the biggest thing on the, on the top. And then of course, the millage, we talked about that a little bit. I guess that's another topic for tonight, but.
Georgia. Lisa.
None tonight.
David.
Nothing.
David.
Two things. I attended two township meetings. I was at Columbus Township meeting. I addressed Mercury Broadband. I tried to get Scott to attend. He did send an email. I could not get a representative from Mercury, so I was able to give him the best information I could from what I understand. And then I also gave a rundown on the ARPA funds with the supervisor and all the trustees on what potentially projects that'll be happening with the Road Commission. Then I met with Riley Township Board and general law townships, everyone's different, but they have similar. So they had a salary compensation, so it's pretty good with what they did. They went with salary compensation for 2024 and they will put this on their budget for 2024. No raises for any employees there, I mean elected officials. So supervisor, clerk, trustees, and the treasurer all be making the same amount of money. So no wage increases.
Joey.
Nothing tonight.
One thing I'm going to touch on. Actually, Commissioner Trello and I had a meeting at the airport the other day with the airport director to talk about some of the different things. For example, we don't have a forklift service at the airport. Some of the cargo planes require, you know, forklifters, actually an individual out there. I think it's glass aviation. We actually met with somebody that's kind of interested in a flight school out there. And I was stunned to, Ms. Trello knows a lot about aviation. I did not know that. She used to fly. Her kids fly. They own helicopters. I mean, because they're, they're talking this Swahili to me and she jumped right in. I asked her, I'm like, how do you know that? And she's like, oh, I used to fly. I'm like, really? So you're going to, you might be our new aeronautics appointee to the record.
Can we, can we get her to spray for SpongeBob?
Yeah, no, it was, it was, it was good information. Some of those, just small things at the airport that we can improve on, really, so. Item number 10, citizens wishing to address aboard Rob Malek, Port Huron NAACP Detention Center.
Good evening. How are you doing today? My name is Rob Malek. I'm the Legal Redress Chair from the Port Huron NAACP. And as of late, we've gotten quite a few complaints about the detention center. I've sent a couple of letters to the appropriate committee to no avail, but I understand things take time. We have, relaying these, we have issues with the heat. It, I, from my assumption, or from my understanding, it's a boiler and it's an old boiler and they need maintenance. I understand that these things are line items on budgets and they need to be addressed and it's an older facility. But we have people in there and those people deserve safe and lodging. There's also, so what we heard is fist-sized cracks in the walls. I'm not sure of the age of the facility, but being that it's a jail or a detention facility, I would assume that'd be pretty high, a pretty high item to fix. They say it's breezy. Perhaps that's why the HVAC is a hard time keeping up. I don't know. I understand that what a lot of the complaints for the HVAC did come through, it was on the terrible cold, cold days. They've also been told about rodent infestations from multiple people. I'm not here to, I'm not judging. I'm relaying concerns. I just, I want the same thing. I think everybody else does. Let's, let's fix this. The B pod seems to be where a lot of complaints are coming from. A lot of people who have families in the B pod, that seems to be a hot, hot topic. Another problem that we seem to be having a lot is there's technical issues in the kiosk for the visitation. Since the COVID mandates had been lifted federally, why do we not have in-person visitation? Why is there no work release? The kids of the inmates seem to be struggling. It, it's an undue burden to them. The other question that we had too was, well, with the kiosk, it was very expensive. One family told me that they're spending upwards of $250 a month to communicate with, with their spouse. That's a lot of money and especially for, not everybody has that. And if there's kids, it, it, we can do better. I'm just here to relay the concerns. If anybody would like to reach out, I can leave my contact information. You all have a great day and thank you so much.
Okay, no other citizens wishing to address the board. No unfinished business. New business, item A, approval of county dispersments.
This time I move to approve the county dispersments for the month of January 2024 in the amount of $19,962,970.77.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item B.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Stephen Smith to the Health Advisory Board as District Five Representative for the remainder of a two-year term expiring December 31st, 2025.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item C.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Denise Brooks to the Library Board as District One Representative for the remainder of a five-year term expiring 8/26/24.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item D.
This time I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 24-02 placing the Veterans Affairs Millage Proposal on the ballot. Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Item E.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement with Everbridge for emergency management for the alert and warning notification system for 2024 in the amount of $31,000.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Back up. That's a roll call.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item F.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve Fiscal Year 24 Marine Safety Program Grant Application as presented.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item G.
This time I move to approve the Memorandum of Understanding with Community Mental Health for Substance Use Disorder Services for the Recovery Court Program for a term of 1/1/24 through 12/31/24 in the amount not to exceed $20,000.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item H.
This time I'd move to approve Letter of Agreement between Community Mental Health and the Mental Health Court for the term of 10/1/23 through 9/30/23 in an amount not to exceed $35,000.
Support. Beeden.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Aye.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Mental Health Court Grant subcontract with Bluewater DRP for drug and alcohol testing for the term of October 1st of '23 through September 30th of '24 in the amount not to exceed $54,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item J.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mental Health Court Grant subcontract with Huron House for a term of 10/1/23 through 9/3/24 in the amount not to exceed $17,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Smasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item K.
This time I would move to approve the landfill as the lead applicant on the EPA Environmental Climate Justice Community Change Grant Application.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item L.
At this time, I'd like to motion to approve the District Four ARPA project for mid-city nutrition for the purchase of kitchen equipment in the amount of $184,666.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item M.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the Central Dispatch Manning Table Revision Request to eliminate two shift leads and add one dispatch supervisor for 2024 and the second in 2025.
Support.
Discussion.
Yes, would Dave or Carrie know anything about that little background on that, the need or the process that came about? To do the Manning Table change, is that, I don't know, maybe Dave knows. I don't know.
Yeah, if you'd like, they used, these positions used to be in there and then they took them back off and now putting them back in because of some staffing issues and that.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item N.
This time I'd like to make a motion to approve the District Three ARPA project for landmark nonprofit housing for the purchase of a generator in the amount of $11,000.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item O.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with Dyke Security for Parks and Recreation in the amount of $17,460 for the term of January 1st of '24 through December 30th, or 31st of 2026.
Support.
Discussion. Roll call.
Commissioner Trello.
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Damas.
Yes.
Commissioner Smasko.
Yes.
Commissioner Baldwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Beeden.
Yes.
Commissioner Chairperson Bo.
Yes. Item P.
This time I'd move to the March Board Meeting the Recommendation to Adopt Policy 139, requesting a reasonable accommodation.
Support. Baldwin.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed. Item Q.
This time I moved forward the March Regular Board Meeting, the Recommendation to Adopt Policy 140, Non-Discrimination and Discrimination Complaint Policy.
Support. Beeden.
Discussion. All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Item 13, Administrator's Report. Carrie.
The camera project that was previously approved by the Commissioners was completed last week, so there are now 14 different cameras in this building. It covers public spaces and the hallways and entrances.
One back here over your head?
Yes.
I just noticed that.
That's new. We currently have an RFP out for an IT assessment and what that'll do is come in, assess what the different technologies we're using, make recommendations on, you know, perhaps enhancements we could make to our system and also a long-term technology plan for us as to what we should be investing in in the future.
Is that just for people under administration or is that the other constitutional offices as well, courts and sheriffs and all that?
So this is essentially for the IT department, but departments, all departments will be involved to provide input as to the different items. They have concerns they may have as far as systems that they operate. So it's going to be comprehensive.
The courthouse, prosecutor's office, sheriff, district courts, they have the whole interface with the state and all that. So they, would they be looking at all that as well or not really?
So they're not going to be doing actual, like, testing of our system. They're going to look at the different technologies we use, the programs we use. I know many of these state systems, we don't have a choice. But, you know, the backbones of our system, the network, those types of issues. I know Commissioners have, have heard some concerns in the past from some departments, you know, on, on different issues. So we felt this assessment. We've never had one done before. Most counties do have something like this, a technology plan and an assessment to go ahead and help us move forward with some new projects.
Do we have a cost target on that, Carrie? Do we, not really?
I don't know. Since it's the first time we've done it, I'm, I'm not sure what those bids will come back at and that'll come back. Those are due March 1st. Since this is a part of strengthening the backbone of our system, this project would be ARPA eligible. Speaking on ARPA projects, we are internally meeting bi-monthly to review all of the internal ARPA projects, making sure the timelines, because we're coming up on that deadline very quickly. We have several internal projects that the Board had approved some time ago that have not had any motion yet. So we'll be working with departments, letting them know if those items, if we're not seeing any movement, those funds will likely be reallocated to something else because we don't want to wait till the end and find out a project isn't happening and have unspent funds. As part of that, the Health Department move update, we're getting pretty close. We should have budget estimates by the end of this month. And it looks like we are hopefully still on target or pretty close to being on target to having those RFPs issued and all the approvals happen. So any sort of construction work can begin in June, once the state vacates the space. Brief landfill update. We are going to be working with Tetra Tech to continue the air quality monitoring. As you might recall, we had air quality monitoring in place for a two-week period. Tetra Tech is going to be coming back and repeating that. The equipment they had did not measure down to a low enough part per billion that we thought it did. So they are going to repeat that test with more sensitive sensors. And we are proposing that we keep that in place for a 90-day period. Myself and some staff met with 123net, I believe it was last week. They were just talking about some broadband projects that they would like to do in the county and the BEAT funding that they're going to be applying for. They are working with St. Clair County RISA and they have worked with St. Clair County RISA on numerous projects. So they were just giving us an update. And earlier today, we received notification that our financial statements once again received the Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence.
Congratulations.
I know Commissioner Smasko had asked for an elevator update. I do have a detailed timeline that I can provide each Commissioner. The stack right here is one copy of all the emails that have been exchanged between purchasing, maintenance staff, and the vendor.
Great Lakes Elevator.
I can certainly provide any Commissioner a copy of this that they would like. I didn't make seven copies because it's a lot of paper and I don't know if anyone wants to read the 1,500 pages of emails. But here are, here are the timelines. We do have, right now, Great Lakes Elevator is scheduled to come out the next Tuesday between 8:30 and 9:00 to complete the process, to get the orange elevator in service. And further discussions regarding their contract, we actually have a written legal opinion to discuss in closed session.
Great. I think, I, I know for a fact, I think some of the judges and stuff, because we obviously received some of the emails, that we did approve this.
March 23rd of last year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
One year ago.
Yeah, so, so it's not like we haven't approved. It's just we've had vendor issues and she'll get us up to speed on that.
Yeah, it's, it's been an extensive process. The lead time on these parts, you know, is, is typically a long lead time. So that was part of the delays early on, why they didn't meet the, the June 30 deadline on the elevators.
Where did June 30, that was the contract expiration, June 30?
That's correct.
There was no build-out milestones in that contract.
Well, and, you know, the, the end date of the contract should have been completion of the job.
One would hope, right?
Yes.
I want to thank you, Carrie, for looking at that. When I'm, it's like all the Commissioners, when you go different places, you get some attention from people. And I got a lot of attention from Judge Damon and some other judges at the courthouse. The judges stay in their own lane. They really have a great deference to what we do and allow us to do what we want. But Judge Damon was not real happy with what had occurred in his courtroom and carrying somebody off on a blanket and all that. And there's, and I don't know quite how to do this, but I, and I stopped and talked to him in chambers and they had Mike McMillan stop in. And one thing I suggested, I've been around that courthouse for almost 40 years. And the two elevators, the old, the silver ones, the 60-year-old one, and the other one's the 40-year-old one. And we did a rehab for a little over $300,000 on March 23rd and no elevator for a year, okay? You know, when I do farm equipment, I do rehabs all the time. Bailey wire, duct tape, brazier, you know, weld stuff up. It re-brakes. So my concern, and I'd like to, I don't know how I formalize this, but could we talk about getting on the capital improvement plan an elevator at the northwest old employee entrance on a Sallyport? We had people running away, jumping in the river. We'd have people, you know, in the hallways, you go up there for court and there's women sitting on the benches in handcuffs and orange because they don't have a holding cell. I was in court, in Judge Adair's court, when a fellow tried to escape and he put his head right through the wall. It was just, it's just drywall, you know. So I would like, if there's any interest in the Board, I would, I would like to see if there's an interest from the Board of Commissioners to say, get that on the capital improvement list, look at that. Because the two elevators, the silver and the orange, are both terminate on the, on the third floor, okay? Well, both go to the first floor, second floor. The orange is on the third, the other one's on the second, on the, on the, just stops on what they call, I guess, the lower part of the third. So when one of them goes down on the high end, they can't get equipment up. They can't get their carts up to clean. They can't get their cleaning supplies up. If we had another elevator, a new one, that would give you redundancy and then have some holding cells and maybe a Sallyport, you know, so people couldn't just break free and run off. I'd like to see if we could look at that and somehow get it on the capital improvement list. What would be the process for that, Carrie?
Typically, capital improvement projects are initiated by the department that, that needs that.
I spoke with Matt King and I spoke with Lonnie as well, and they have a, really have an interest in looking at that. Is there something we, all they got to do is have, would it be Lonnie that would ask for that or the sheriff or McMillan or who would ask for that?
Yeah, typically a project like that would, like his past ones, like the addition of holding cells and those types of things have been initiated by the courts. Judge Armstrong.
So.
That's correct.
We looked at putting some holding cells in the basement over there before. Tim Donlin, you know, building them out. And the cost to have, actually have people there to keep an eye on it. We, we were all about doing it. And then they end up saying it was, it was more cost-effective just to drive people back and forth and so on and so forth versus putting people in holding cells, because then you have to monitor them.
Right, with the driving, the driving back and forth continues. They used to walk them across to jail. Now they drive them in a van. And they had the same issue, people coming across the public walkway and chains and orange and all that. And then this.
I just want to know that we did look at it before and they declined, and on the grant of this previous sheriff, but they declined to move forward with it at that time.
They declined. So, you know, at this point, if, if the department had asked for it and the Board considers it, we could move forward with it, regardless of what happened 10 years ago or five years ago or anything.
Absolutely.
Judge Armstrong just brought it forward and had holding cells, I believe, in her court.
Is that part of her rehab they did?
But that was initiated by the judge. Yes, that's correct. Yep, by the courts. And there are also redesign in her actual courtroom to correct some of the spacing and the holding cell.
I will get with Judge Damon and invite him to make a request through Mr. McMillan, I suppose.
That's all I have this evening.
Anything else for Carrie? Have a motion for the Administrator's Report?
So moved. Baldwin. Support. Beeden.
All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Miscellaneous business. Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Anybody have any miscellaneous business? Seeing none, receiving, file?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, receiving, pile packets that were sent to the Commissioners, packets at their places and any other information presented.
Support. All in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed. Adjournment.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session for the purpose of discussing a written legal opinion and to adjourn immediately thereafter. Support.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.